Where we. Do you need involvement to the North Bend City Council work session? Or. Why seven? Why seven?
Uh, go ahead and call the meetings order. And first thing on the agenda is councillor Schultz. So he's the first thing.
Roll call.
Oh.
Your first one to call this of the roll calls.
Councillor Jones here, councillor Hamilton.
Here.
Councillor Garbo.
Here.
Mayor Eaglekey here, councillor Schultz present, councillor Slater.
Here.
Councillor Torres here, thank you.
About that, just let you know, Ms Lori Cooper will be serving as our city attorney pro tem today.
Okay.
As Mark is returning from a lovely crew. So he should be, if he makes it okay, he'll be online tomorrow, very, well, not tandy, went to Alaska, so. Wind blow, wind blow.
All right. Okay, thank you. Uh, well, after calling the meeting to order and having a roll call, next on the agenda would be the public comment. Like, we don't have anybody here.
Okay.
And nobody online, so we'll move to the next item, which is number four, accuracy of motion discussion. I believe this is a item that council chairman brought forward. Did you want to begin?
Yeah, I requested, I asked how important it is for us to get the numbers right. I'm going to record numbers in our motion, it just because if, if it doesn't matter. Then I want to know that, but I wasn't sure. So I emailed our city administrator and he wrote back. Uh, saying, I believe you said that it does matter. Um.
Yeah.
If somebody complains about it, it does, it does matter, what, what we say is the numbers that are gone by. So.
And your attorney is prepared to go across the agenda.
Yeah, yeah, so I just thought it would be good to, yeah, go over.
And I can also ask this question, so, um, is different. Maybe it's different for different words and things, but, or the way I was trained for like city council. Cause there's some things that I do, and even in the U R A, I feel like it's not where you have to say, like, I repeat, I, we, we have a suggested motion. The person makes that motion, I. Have you noticed most, I will repeat exactly what that, I try to repeat exactly what that is. Um, after the person say, I don't, you know, I'll, again, I'll be on some words where people will be like, so moved and then pass. But here, in the city council, I try to read exactly what it is. And so Ms Cooper, no, ask if you want to add to that piece there.
Sure, 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 I can add to it. You know, it, it really, it really is up to the council how they want to, how they want to do it. The whole point is as long as the public and future councils and everybody is aware or can tell from the record what the true number was. So, let, let, I just back up quick, so the legal implications. Um, as far as making a motion that's got, you know, a mistaken or misstated number or anything in it really. What controls is the written document that you're referring to. So if you have a resolution or ordinance in your packet, um, that is what's going to control, you know, it's kind of like writing a check, you know, it's what, the written out. You know, the written out cursive on your check controls the numbers that you put up in the, in the box, right? So it's not a perfect analogy, but, so the written documents are really what kind of control if there's ever a legal dispute. But it is good to be consistent, as I, I'm sure you all know. And I think you can, you know, with, with big numbers, like what happened with this one, where you got millions of dollars and it's, it's, you know, we don't ever say those numbers out loud, you, or we abbreviate, right? Four point one million or whatever it might be. I think you can refer to, in your motion, you can refer to the ordinance number and just say, you know, move to adopt. Uh, the budget in the resolution, you know, twenty twenty five dash whatever, whatever, as stated in the, in today, tonight's packet. So that's just sort of the brief thirty thousand foot answer. Um, unless you want to get in a deeper discussion about it, or you have some specific questions for me, that's kind of what I'm saying.
What if the number isn't in an ordinance or a resolution, like we're, I'm just talking about when we get. Notification in the packet, and my understanding is that the packet is not the public record, what, what's the public record is the video report. And so if we have, you know, which may get really crazy, so if I say, if I say, uh, you know, move for four dollars. And the packet says four million. The, the oral record, the video record had four dollars and the packet had four million, which counts. Or can we say?
Packet, but we, it is, but is uploaded, correct?
It is uploaded, but it's a.
Yeah, it is correct, um, I think what the councillor is saying is. If we're buying a widget and the councillor says, I move that we authorize the purchase of the widget from Acme for four dollars. But the actual cost is, say, four million dollars, are there any implications, um, for authorization? Because, um, because we only have action minutes. Um, uh, and the video recording is your official minutes, if you will. Uh, Ms Lori, is there an implication? And also, I do want to also point out that in our, um, council rules, your, your council rules. Um, it states that the presiding officer, as the mayor has eloquently said, um, shall repeat a motion prior to a vote. So she actually, or he, whoever's filling in, whoever's the presiding officer at the time, actually has to repeat the motion, um, prior to the vote.
Is shall the same as should?
Shall means you absolutely have to.
Should, should.
You shall, uh, might, uh, may, those, those mean different things, shall, you, you will.
So, councillor Jones, like, let's do another example, so if.
Can, can I?
Yeah.
She does have a question to the city attorney, so I just wanted to jump in on that for.
Yeah, so the.
Yeah. Go ahead.
The widget question.
So, uh, so I'm not talking about resolutions or ordinances. I'm just talking about when we have it in our packet, and our packet is uploaded, but my impression was that packets are not the official record. So if in the packet, we have a number, and in the video recording, we have another number. Like, you know, the, the wrong number, because I misread it in the packet. Which number is the legal number, is it on the video or is it in the packet?
Well, again, I'm sorry.
You can see.
She can see.
I mean.
Oh, reading your screen now, that's not a ring reading. No one care for that.
Yeah.
So, I think the official number is, is, it's, it's not clear in that case, but I think what you do and what a court would do. So I, I want to back up first, what you said is the packet isn't official, is not an official public record, your video upload is the official minutes of the meeting. Um, I think it's both, I mean, I think it's, it's kind of a mistake to say that your packet isn't the official public record, it, it is a public record. Um, it may not be the final legal, you know, tie a bow on it number thing, but I think what, what a judge would do is look at all, all the. What, what, what you do for legal interpretation is you look at all the evidence and all the sources of information and try to figure out what the correct. You know, what the correct number is, so in the case that you're talking about, I think. I think what you could do is, um, go back and correct the minutes, uh, do, you know, at a subsequent meeting, perhaps, just, just somebody make a motion and say. There was an error in the numbers that were given in the motion at the last meeting or in the records of whatever date the meeting was, the actual number should have been this. Um. And I think that will clear the record up and, and make it clear to everybody now and in the future. Now, where the confusion can happen is if you're talking amendments and things like that in motions, and different numbers are being thrown around, that's when it can get real confusing. So in the case you're talking about, I think it'd be fairly clear for everybody to agree on, here's what we really meant. Or here's what was really meant by the motion and, and, and work from that, so go ahead.
Like, again, somebody misspoke, like switched some numbers, somebody brought it up, that's, that's on the video, so we know, like, we weren't doing it on purpose, it was a error. It doesn't happen all the time, so I just think that this is not a time for something that, like, we want to read the numbers correctly. But if it happens, we're human beings, then the motion should get restated or again, somebody's going to say, oh, you read that.
Yeah, sure, no, that, that's, that's what I'm hoping for.
But I thought that's what we've been doing.
But I mean, if they're re-read exactly, so, actually.
I usually, yeah. Yeah, and I would say, where I would say, maybe you might see it from me, just like, so, read the motion. And, and, you know, for one last time, but let's just say, like, the most that I would ever do. That I probably have done is say, we were approving something for, uh, uh, you know, um, something that. Our Public Works was doing for ten thousand dollars, and maybe it was ten thousand five hundred sixty nine dollars. If I had said, I got going really quick and was like, ten thousand plus five hundred or something like that, it was off in that way, or read it where it was like, nine sixty eleven thousand dollars. That's. That's not so critical, is it, like, I mean, is it, are you, like, is, are you councillor candidate, you're trying to make a big deal out of this?
I'm not trying to make a big deal out of this, but we had a half a million dollar number mistake.
You have a half a million, okay.
Okay, and it's easy to do, I mean, we must speak numbers all the time. And, um, in that case. You know, I didn't know if that was a problem or not, I mean, it sounds like. If we make a number mistake, we should save in the moment, which we have been, but when I did that one. I had a few head nods that were like, you know, why are you wasting time, so I just thought, I would like clarification on this.
So on that, and like, in that scenario, I think that was probably last, two weeks ago when I wasn't here, how did, how did we handle that scenario, like, it was, it was corrected in the minutes or?
It was corrected in the moment.
Okay.
But, but my compatriots thought I was wasting time, so.
I don't, why do you think that, we thought it was wasting, like, that, that's my question, is I, I don't think it was a waste of time, so I just, like, that's what I assume that we do, like, I, where I could have.
Misunderstood, not like my, not my per, okay, I could have misunderstood. It was a half a million dollar mistake that I thought was enough to say something.
Yeah.
And when I got looks, including from you, and I just thought, you, you know, people made a few comments on the difference, so I thought I would like to know what the story is. So.
I would think, and I can go back to her, so the attorney, I would think that, yes, a half a million dollars is a lot, is a, is worth really noting in the moment and making a big deal out of it. As opposed to, oh, I meant eleven thousand five hundred and seven, eleven thousand five dollars. That, I, I don't think people would lose their sleep over, but a half million dollars would be worth, like, hey, we got that correct, right?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, especially when it was around the U R A and we haven't divided community on whether that's a good thing or not. So, anyway, so, so that's why I wanted clarification for me, and this is the venue where I can get that kind of clarification.
Yeah.
So I appreciate everybody using their time.
Do you feel when you got your answer?
Yeah, what I'm hearing is we need to get the numbers correct, the sooner we get them correct, the better. And so, if I hear something, I will continue to say, but.
Yeah. And we, and I also heard from, um, Ms Cooper that. If something ever came to it, they would look at all the things, the packet, the video, what the intentions were.
Sure, but that's, but, a judge, that means it goes before, sure, that, you know, it's a whole layer of stuff that is a bigger waste of time than the ten minutes here, so. Anyway, thank you, appreciate.
What is saying it's a waste of time, so you keep saying that, so it's really interesting to me that, again, this is a discussion that we're having, because we want to make sure that we're all on the same page, so.
Yes.
Waste of time, so you, but you keep implying that you think it's a waste of time.
I just, I just, I thought I heard you say this seems like a lot of time for this, since that's what we do, so. My mistake.
Okay. Okay.
One, one more point, Madam Mayor, can I just say something quickly, I think it's a great discussion, you're exactly right. And I think in parliamentary procedure, I don't know how you all do it, because I don't attend very many of your, of your council meetings, but, um, you know, you make a motion, it's seconded, and then usually there's discussion. Uh, if I'm not mistaken, most times, so then somebody could point out, um, I think that number should be, I don't know if I heard correctly, here's what the number should be. Um, or anybody could raise a point of order at any time as well, and just gently correct, there's nothing wrong with that, and that's really what should happen, that's why we have six heads up there instead of just one, right? Like, to help oversee everything, so that's all I have to say.
And you just give me a, you always let me know when I don't have my glasses.
Okay.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate, okay, I think that was good and good conversation, and we're going to move on to the next agenda item then, and that is number five, creating a charter review committee. Um, I'm going to ask our city administrator walk through page one of our packet here about, um, our option for creating the city charter review.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, uh, as I mentioned at our previous meeting, um, I worked with our city attorney, uh, we have done a comprehensive review of our existing charter to the most current. Version, and I say current, um, with, with quotation marks, of the league's cities' most current, um, uh, model charter. Uh, charters are specific to your city, your, you, you have home role, and so, um, they're okay that they vary. And just because the league has a model charter doesn't mean that you have to follow that model. Uh, you can, uh, make, uh, ebbs and flows as you see fit, as long as they're legal, um, uh, within, um, the letter of the law. Um, so the city attorney, um, and I concur that you have, uh, three options. Uh, on how to create a, uh, charter review, review committee, you can simply have a council committee, um, it's spelled out in your, uh, council rules. This would be membership of just simply city councillors. Um, as the city attorney said, is, well, that'd be no different than having a work session after work session after work session. Which you all might want to sign up to, um, and if you have that, then staff will be there and will report it and take minutes and all of that. Um, you can have a citizen lay committee, um, this can be a board commission lay committee, um, open to residents, very much like your July Jubilee Committee, uh, was established. However, um, uh. The, uh, city recorder and I have concur that basically when you have two individuals on a committee. And you are now reporting up for eventual change, that, um, the standard is that that should be that a public meeting. And so once you have two council members on that, um, and so very much like you saw the July Jubilee, it got reported, minutes were taken, so. And last but not least, you can have, um, a, uh, the entire council, uh, could choose, um, uh, to, uh. Select individuals, um, you could each appoint an individual, um, and they go through your charter and they can make recommendations to you. Um, ultimately, you have the final say, uh, we have certain deadlines, so. Uh, in, in that, I show us, uh, sort of hit the ground running so that you can make, uh, November. The reason is, is that there are some changes to the charter that were just approved in May. We're going to be on the ballot anyway in November, um, and then there is election next year. And for some other reason, there was another reason why I said we needed to, we need it done now, but then maybe remember what that was? That'd be important. We'll think about it. There must have been a reason, uh, that's like, get it done, because, uh, in November, if you get it done, then you could have it May. Um, oh, well, there'd be an election, you can't bind over another council, and you'd have an election next year, and so, so you got everything on the table. But there's some reason why it was for this November. But.
August, September, August.
I think maybe, huh?
August, September, April, May.
Very, uh, so you, you sort of kind of got three scenarios there, um, as to how you want to go about it.
Okay, right, what is the, what is the council thinking?
Can you get it, can you get enough citizens that want to commit to it?
I think we could, um, recruit some, I have some people in mind that I think would be great, that are community leaders, that might have some good feedback, or that. I feel like it shouldn't be the council, um. You like to see some people.
Yeah, yeah, okay, sure.
What do you think, councillor president?
I think that citizens should be involved.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, we don't want to make our own rules, I mean.
Yeah. Retire. Councillor Slater, you've done this before.
Yeah, no, I, I, I like the idea of having the citizens, well, in council, maybe not the whole council, but whatever, participating, and I feel you've got experience with it. What's working, what hasn't worked, and able to guide the process, so I, I think both of those could, well, here again, you can advertise and, and I. Believe, you know, let's do it like the other committees, you bring forward the list of people that, that you found that, uh, that you think would. Would be the, really find assets to the committee, and also get removed or changed or do whatever that way. But that's a little faster than trying to, you know, round up the whole world and, and, and put it together that way. The other thing being too is, because I've read further in this packet, it talked about three-year terms and whatever for various committees. I think this ought to be a very, with everybody having a very focused committee, here's your charge, here's your drop dead date, you know. And our task is to get a product out, to have that available for the election coming up.
Didn't say in here, did, what, like, how many, do you anticipate three, two-hour meetings or something like that, when we could go back to our recruits at the time commitment?
Well, that really depends, um, when we look at. You know, if you, uh, look down in here on the side by side. There's not a lot that evades from your model, uh, charter, so it really comes down to, um, very small gaps, if you will. Uh. Uh, you know, you could large the size of the castle if you wanted to, um. Some have twelve. Or, I don't like, I mean, this. Um, but, um, uh, you know, you have two-year versus four-year terms on, say, the mayor. Um. You know, there's some things adopted by ordinance versus resolution, you know, there, there's not a lot of tweaking to it. Um, uh. Interestingly enough, all the way down here, I pointed out on the model, um, your form of government is not a city administrator form of government, but yet I'm called city administrator. That goes way, way, way back, we actually researched it, um, a city administrator is under a stronger form of government.
Yeah.
Because under a strong, you're a former government.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I'm a council manager of former government, as, as city manager, I'm your CEO of the city, um, and I'm your chief executive, chief administrator officer, but I'm not your city administrator.
I mean, it's, so, it's not, it, when you look at where we're at. Next with the LLC model charter, and then any potential discussion that, you know, councillors or, um, community members would have. I don't see it as being like a heavy lift. I would think, you know, again, I'm just sort of throwing a number out there, but as, as we come up with the plan, and I go back to you, Schulz, or, um. They still call you councillor Torres, or, you know, name change? Um, is there, yeah, like, within three meetings, then, then that, those recommended changes. Would come back for any other input from the council, right?
The council always has final say.
Yeah, so say, so say, if, you know, two of us to be on this, um, meeting, committee. It's not like you wouldn't just have input.
Yeah, sure.
You know, because it will come back and then we'll make the final recommendation.
Well, input can also be sent to the committee.
Yeah.
Um, and so for instance, it's very much like, you know, if you have suggestions for the committee, you know, get into us by this day. The committee itself could solicit feedback from the general public, I encourage you to, you know, solicit folks that. The committee itself could solicit feedback from the general public, I'd encourage you to, you know, solicit folks that have knowledge about. Charters or government, um, because uh, this is not like setting up like a nonprofit, um, it's, it's a little more complicated than that. And so.
Yeah.
But we are a nonprofit.
Well, show me your nonprofit status, because you have none from the IRS.
I feel like, um, I feel like if the, if the framework is that they're. Just evaluating how we are different from the model charter, because there's a couple useful changes in here, I mean, I do think it's useful to have the. City administrator, have the city manager title changed, and that's useful, I think the mayor, maybe a better term for years, that would pass for useful. I think rebuilding the quorum, you know, there's a bunch of stuff in here that should be a quick discussion.
You might even be able to sell it as two, two-hour meetings.
You could, I think the biggest question, and, and this, this is one I'm sure that the law firm is going to really grapple over, and we talked about it briefly at the last meeting. Is um, we learned a hard lesson um, under the prior administration, when I say prior administration, the prior cycle, though, of, of four years. Um, you know. It's, it's hard to protect your city administrator if you have no mechanism to actually discipline or remove a council member. And uh, you know, this city spent. Executed seventy-five thousand dollars, and they couldn't do anything, um, and you were left in a situation where you had your. Chief executive still having his civil rights violated, and so. Um, I would love for this committee uh, to really work with the city attorney, but uh, we've been watching things in other cities. And even their models aren't working, and so I don't know what is the fix, but it would be worthwhile. To uh, have the committee explore that, um, and, and the council can certainly. Um, request a formal review um, to the city attorney to sort of kind of investigate that. Mark somewhere that, that may be coming, because. That was kind of one of the things that was really frustrating for the prior administration for four years, is you can, you're. You have what's in council rules, but the charter clearly prompts, and. You were left without, you know. Tolls, yeah, and I don't have an answer for it, not, not Morgan, I don't have an answer for it, hey, answer in other states.
So is there, the, could I ask the council if they have any recruits in mind to bring forth a name to me? Of, of any um, residents that I think would be a good fit for this?
Yeah, yeah, the, the, the committees um, are appointed by um, I, refresh, so I'm, oh, no, I, I, my red light is that. That they are appointed with confirmation, and so whatever the council decides is processed, in fact, if you recall. Got me in trouble because it got repeated all the time, if you recall the last time we did the Parks Master Plan, like. Wouldn't it be ideal if each council member picked one person, well, they sent us names, and we contacted those, and everyone bought one of those, said, yes, I want to be involved, the other. We could never get a hold of, and so, yes, it'd be nice to have, like, you know, counselor, if you wanna say. I wanna bring forth this person, and in that way, your committee is not too unwieldy. And each of you have someone representing you that you can chat with, talk to, you know. Um, that's, that's sort of kind of my thought process, because I suspected you have two council members on it, it's gonna be a public meeting anyway, so.
Is there, so let's, should we set a date for um, the council to uh, give you a name to communicate with me? On that, if we wanna go ahead and kind of like set some timeline.
If that's the world council, absolutely, I'd be glad to.
So, how do we think about this? If, um, in the next week, if you're like, actually, I do think some of the, in the committee. Would be great, and you move that name forward to David, um, then we can compile those names. Along with whoever here also would like to maybe participate on that, um, I would like to be part of this committee. And so if one or two of you are interested, and we can do that, then we can look at those names and the makeup of it all and go, actually, maybe we don't need everybody, maybe we only need, you know. See what you all come up with, and then by the time we would meet again, um. Then we could appoint that committee with the needs of their way. I can do it for the confirmation of the council, but that still keeps us with this timeline, we need to act quicker.
Because you wanna, you wanna start, we'll need your meetings in August, and. So we wanna do a little more impatient with them, and then start getting going. And so they have to finish uh, by early September, so they got six weeks.
Yeah, so I say, a week by week from today, if you have to, you can, you can talk to that person, say, hey, I wanna move your name forward, don't let them, don't say that they're guaranteed to be on it yet. But I wanna suggest that you could be potentially on this committee, wanna move your name forward, you send that to um, David, our city administrator. And then you and I can kind of work with it, and who from the council would also like to be on the committee? I mean, does anybody have a brain, Councilor Slater, would you like to?
Sure.
Okay, I don't think we need any more tools. Right?
How, how, how many, what, what size?
Well, if, if you and I were the council representations and councilors, I haven't had a chance to hear it very quite yet, so was there anything else that you wanted to say?
No.
Okay, um, so if, if, so there's, so there's seven of us. Um, and then you and I would be, if seven people recommended a name, and then you and I would be looking at nine, I don't think we need nine. I think in groups, I like to see like six, there, you need six to seven.
Yeah.
But you're.
What numbers for that?
Five to seven, but you giving the name would be able for me to kind of look at that makeup and say, oh, maybe we don't need. Three people from the finance world, we need, you know, we can kind of, I can take those recommendations and come back to you with a potential slate. We could have that discussion then at the next work session in two, in two weeks, and say. Hey.
It, it should be in the, I've never, yeah.
Yeah. The, the, we need five or seven.
Okay.
Five, four, seven. All right, yeah, so throw your suggestions toward, I would say, go to anybody that you're recruiting, you're looking at probably two meetings. Because I'm gonna guess, would you picture this, Mr. Maliron, that when we have that charter committee review meeting. We would start by, like, front-loading the people with the information, here's a third charter, here is what the L O C is, give them some stuff to read first. Here's where we see the gaps, and then um, so that they know that they're not just here to make up some like, hey, free ice cream every Sunday. In the charter. Well, I, it would be gross.
Hate it, I would hate it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the deadline, a week before the name.
So I would say July sixteenth at noon, it's the drop did, deadline third, because that way we can get them in the packet. Um, and then you can review them on the twenty-first, and then appoint on the twenty-second. That then gives us time to communicate uh, to the individuals. And then uh, schedule our first meeting in August with them, and getting wrapped up by early September.
Hey.
July fourteenth to the mayor with your suggestion.
Yeah, or send, so you have David, no matter. Um, Councilor Slater, send them to Mr. Maliron.
Good.
And then that way he can.
So just say four, Ethan, you're ready, but you're not until the sixth.
Or I just text to David, I just text first, I mean, it, it, it's time to get it into the pack, it'll be by the sixth.
So there's a little bit of which wrong, also depending on how you want to think about getting your information in.
Okay.
They look early, you know.
I even want to write notes, guys.
Yeah, I'll be sending a follow-up email just in case.
Oh. Cool.
Done.
Yeah.
You've already talked to people about this?
I don't talk to anybody.
You've already.
I have, I have control on mine that.
Only for twenty-five years ago, so.
Is this twenty-five years ago, or was the last time?
Twenty, twenty, oh, twenty-two thousand.
Two thousand.
We're a lot of stars here.
All right, let's go ahead and move now to our sites.
Wait, there you go.
Next item agenda is review the city council agenda for July. Hey, that's, I don't know, so, Mr. Maliron, we have some recommendations tomorrow on that, would you like to tell us about that?
Yeah, yeah, and a reminder, I will be on via Zoom from Ben. So uh, you can see him on your big screens, um, Albert Guzzi, uh, from the Streets Department, forty years of service with the city.
Holy shit.
In fact, he can say how he named all the streets and lines and all, all those other great things, he's got fascinating stories.
Yeah.
Um. And uh, there's the coronation for the July Jubilee ambassadors, and so uh. I don't know anything about that other than it's on the agenda, so we've had that, so I think so she's got it covered, right, so that's what I recall, so. That, that's all good, um, there's this consent calendar, um, typically, um, I'm told there's cancellations of specific meetings in August, November. And December, so on page one, our city reporter went in and examined the calendar. And has come to the conclusion that based on past practice and conflicts with holidays, that. You cancel the meeting set for August twenty-fifth through twenty-sixth. November tenth and eleven. November twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, and December twenty-second, twenty-third, wow, that's a lot.
That's a lot.
Um, because of where your holidays fall, now, what that means then is if we have business items. We're having emergency call me, and so the goal is to try. Not to, but, you know. But there's the recommendation from the city recorder.
Okay, I, and that's the consent calendar for tomorrow, that's been done in the past, and I think it's great for me.
We need to have a meeting, we certainly have a lunch or whatever.
And you got a one, two, three, four, five line votes.
Okay.
Okay.
Doesn't have any numbers in the notes, so, yeah, so.
That's nice, all right, so um. All right, uh, let's see, then, let's see, um, uh, finance uh, director is here. But it's kind of simple, but however, it requires council approval, staff cannot just open a bank account. And so what we've recognized is that this K nine program is going to go multiple years and span multiple fiscal years, and donations are coming in. And so our finance director is here, he can answer any questions, but he is asking that. We establish a checking account for our K nine program, so, yeah.
Should be a dedicated.
Where's it, where's it going right now?
Well, so let me just give you a. So a, a lot of the donations we get already, already come to the city and are donated through uh, either web payments or checks to the city. Um, some grantors. And uh, want to do it electronically. They, and to do that, they want us to provide our routing number and our checking account number. And I'm reluctant to just give that information out in an online application, and so I'd rather have a dedicated account where I know I can give it to them, it's in the city's name, and that's the other thing, it has to be in the city's name. Use the city's E I N and that sort of thing, so it's really fulfilling those requirements, again, we're, we're getting donations in other ways as well, so it's. It's really to facilitate those that wanna do it electronically, uh, specifically by A C H.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Any questions? Okay, yeah, so that. Takes us.
Number seven, Ralph's behind me, uh, he's got a requested purchase of a backcom, combination sewer cleaner. Chrome and biorevenue equipment. And it's on a big six-year packet, and there is money in, uh, numbers attached.
Basically, there's several purchasing methods, um. That comply with our state Norris two seventy-nine A B and C. One of them is a source well contract, what we are experiencing is, you remember when you bought the engine for Jim? I think Goose Bay bought one a year later, and it was a hundred and twenty thousand dollars more. We're experiencing a rapid growth, it takes about, oh, two and a half, three months to put a public bid, the state. Just delayed their end carb, which is California emissions. Requirements, they're supposed to start July one, but they delayed it till October. Which is a fifty to sixty thousand dollar adder on a piece of equipment for. Not saying clean air is not a good requirement, but we are not stopping traffic like you are in L A, so. We're looking at this opportunity to use a source well contract, which is, matches the state purchasing rules, is competitive bid project process. Um, to purchase a new combination sewer cleaner, which was budgeted an amount of seven hundred and forty thousand. But today we have a low, low price of six hundred and thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and fifty-six dollars.
Thank you, but this has been on like the.
It was on last year.
Put up a little bit, so we can save fifty to sixty thousand dollars.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. That makes sense. When you got saving was the capital.
And that's it.
Any questions? Okay, all right. All right, um, that takes us to what? How many number?
The administrative report, there won't be executive sessions, it's uh, well, in half lots of no action. Uh, then, so you have committees for reports. Council comments, other committee reports, you have your, your in-train coming up, you just get uh, the five thousand dollar grant, thanks to the Ford founding foundation. And so uh, we have representation right now from. Uh, representation from all school districts, the cities, the county. The urban regional districts, that's gonna be a good training.
By representation, who they've agreed to attend? Or you mean just.
Everyone on that list I sent you. Yeah, it's confirmed. Every X is a com- compromise. So we have, we have over uh, two dozen folks attending.
Nice.
So I don't know, the list is probably.
Nice, good.
So it's pretty, pretty straightforward meeting tomorrow, you'll be on Zoom, um, we'll all do like we did last year with the toyed with the coordination, and like, call them, come up and shake their hand. Um, can you do that, and, um.
Some type of ceremony, but I mean, maybe you all know, I don't know, but that the, someone will be here.
Yeah.
I was here last year. But I've told it's, it's.
You gotta use.
You got coordinator and someone, so, yeah, it's all handled, as I told.
Yeah.
It's just not one of those things that happens upstairs, I don't know, so.
Yeah.
I just know we saw the calendar.
And then lots of, I mean, I know we're, we're still in the work session, so I was thinking about that, then we'll, maybe two more weeks, so it's a little July Jubilee, right?
It's coming, but, and then um, basically. Or someone will take photos, so we'll, we'll recover for tomorrow.
Yeah, I think we'll ask the. Photo with, we'll, all the ceremony items, Albert and his um, new Jubilee, or, well. Okay, wow, look at that, five thirteen, anybody else? Are we good in order?
Someone got a birthday this week, it's on my calendar.
So, yeah, there's lots of things that we're celebrating, am I allowed to say those?
Yeah.
We have, we have a, a duly wedding our president, so we all can give congratulations, Councilor Torres, he got married last, last week, yeah, yeah.
Get a little round of applause.
Yeah, okay, all right, um, thank.
I'll update your dungeons with uh.
All right, we did it.